Okay, welcome to the September 2nd regular city council meeting. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Loquith.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, call the roll.
Goodlo, or is it Loquith? Here. Elliott.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Palmer.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Okay, we have no proclamations to read tonight. We have awards and recognitions. Item 3A, Library Card Design Contest Winner, not an option for public comment.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. My name is Josephine Camarillo. I am the Director of the Ellensburg Public Library, and I'm here to present our award-winning library card design. Late last spring, we needed to order more library cards, and we've had our current library card for over 15 years and thought it needed a new, fresh look and a fun change. So, we held a contest, a library design contest, from July 1st to July 31st, and we had about, I think, 21 entries. So, they're all great. It was a fabulous showing. There is no prize money for the winner, the winning design. However, their design will be in the hands of at least 5,000 people in town. So, I think that's a great bonus there. The judging took place in August. That consisted of our staff, our library and home staff, taking a poll of their favorites. And also, that included, the judge's poll included the city manager, the library board member, and myself. And tonight, I am happy to present our library design. I think, oh, I'm supposed to bring it up. How do I do that? Is it there already? So... Oh, I just wanted to show this first, what the library cards looked like before, way back when, the classic design, the one I received when I came here 25 years ago, was plain white. Then, we went to this nice scenic one. Oh. There we go. So, the white on top was the classic design, I call it. Then, the next, we had our previous design, which is a little landscape of what our library looks like. And then, about 15 years ago, we had a central class design, the green and white, which is beautiful, but I think now is due for a change. And a change we have, so I'm going to stop, share this, and present our new library card. And then, to Zoom, share that design.
Oh, that's cool.
And the artist is here. Her name is Megan Pickrell, and she will introduce herself and talk a little bit about her design. Megan?
Thank you, Josephine. Yes, I grew up here in Ellensburg. In fact, I went to elementary school right here. I probably had PE right here and was not liking it. Also, my dad in town, Tom Pickrell, he was a Pennequ artist. So, I've been around art all my life and books, and I've spent a lot of time in the Ellensburg Public Library. And I'm honored that they chose my design. I'm sure they received a lot of wonderful designs. And I'm pretty excited about it also because I work in the Lincoln Elementary School Library, so I'll be able to tell all the kids there that they can come get a card if they don't already have one. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Any questions from council?
No. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job.
Can I get a new card?
You're gonna mail out.
Because I have like two versions ago.
You can exchange your current card for free in September and October. So, if you don't have a library card, you get a new card. If you have, if you want a new one, the new design, then you can get one for free.
Thank you. Item 3B, this is a presentation on the small grant program for Kitata County Lodging Tax.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council, Heidi. I'm here tonight to talk about and get some feedback from city council. My name is Jessica Carricker. I serve on the Kitata County Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, and we just got through our large capital grant process. And in our meeting last month, we discussed the opportunity to open up a small capital grant, which would be out of cycle for us. Typically, that we've had large capital grants every four years, small capital grants every two years, but due to the fact that we have the available funds, we are, we considered as a committee floating the conversation of awarding up to 1.5 million total in small capital funds, which historically, we've only gone up to 50,000. Once, we've done 70,000. And we wanted to get feedback from city councils because one of the things that we did discuss as a committee was prioritizing and/or only offering the small capital grants to municipalities that own, that did not receive any funding from the large capital grants, and then answer any questions that councils might have. We are on the agenda for all but two current municipalities at this time to present and just primarily get feedback because our goal is to come, have open dialogue, see if there's any questions, concerns, anything that we can address. Roylene Crawford was going to be here with me this evening, but with the fair going on, she's still working. So, Commissioner Oshada, who is our Chair of the Committee, is here as well, who can answer questions if there's any questions.
So, we'll start with questions first, then I have some feedback. Questions?
Timetable for this grant, and if citizens are interested in participating or understanding what's been submitted, how do they go about doing so?
Timeline hasn't been discussed. I believe, and it's pretty typical for our committee, to try and act quickly on this. So, from my understanding, we'll have a discussion decision on the September 10th meeting, which is next Wednesday at 1:00 PM at the Commissioner's Room off there, not the conference room, thank you, so that we can put out an RFP. It would be similar to, I believe, four weeks from the RFP going out to ending when the grants would be due, so that we can act quickly and get funds out as quickly as possible. If citizens are interested in being a part of it, we did start recording our meetings as of last month, and we'll be having them published, so they can go back and see those on the website for the county. They can also attend the meetings. We're typically the second Wednesday of the month at 1:00 PM at the Commissioner's Conference Room.
Any further questions?
Just to get on that just a little bit more. Thank you, Jessica. As you mentioned 1.5 million, is that, is there a limit per ask on what you're targeting for that disbursement?
I guess it would go a few different ways. The committee wanted feedback to see how councils felt on if we chose to limit the funding to just the three municipalities that did not receive the large capital grants. So, it's going to depend on how we move forward as a committee and see fit to do that. So, there's potential for a limit. However, knowing that two of the municipalities are smaller and have the opportunity to sit down and engage with them as well, and kind of get feedback on how big of a project could they fund, I think it could be potentially pretty fluid, like we did with the large capital grant, on not setting max on their request, but rather letting the municipalities know what funds are available.
Thank you.
Yep.
No further questions. I would just, you have a question?
I just wanted to, how many people are on your committee and make that decision?
There's four. There's two individuals that pay into the entity, one from upper, one from lower, and then two that receive funds. So, Roylene Crawford receives funds. She represents the event center. She's on lower county part. I represent lower county. We have Airbnb, so we pay into that fund. We have two, I'm blinking on the Suncadia gals' name, Karen Porter. She pay, she represents Suncadia. They pay into the fund. And then, we've got the Horse Parker receives funds. They have a representative on there as well.
Thank you.
So, my initial feedback is I am not in favor of limiting it to cities that didn't get the funding. I think the funding has a purpose, and I think that that funding should be maximized in the county regardless of which entity applies for that funding.
So, not in favor of limiting it?
No, not at all. And for the record, the City of Ellensburg is in that group. So, I'm not looking to have the city be in a limited pool.
Okay.
Your concern with that is?
I think that there's an intent for these funds, and I think that the intent should be applied evenly throughout the county and not specifically to municipalities who didn't succeed in a previous process. That runs contrary to the intent of the money.
Okay.
Of course, I can be outvoted.
I think one of the other options that we did discuss is that instead of limiting it, just creating it, that applications for municipalities that didn't get funded would have a higher, whether it be scoring or preference, the wording would be up to the committee.
Again, I would be opposed to that.
For contents, could you kind of break down for those that aren't familiar with the process, the previous grant process, how much was already appropriated before we start talking about that?
Actually, we're going to stay with the small grant process.
So, just the 1.5?
Yeah.
Not what?
Yeah.
I would tend to agree with the Mayor's assessment. He's familiar with the process, and I think reasoning is sound.
My only concern with that is if the intention was to try to help appropriations for those that didn't receive it, there might be higher competition associated with that. But I understand as far as the fairness of what you're trying to go for. I get that, that perception of it, but...
Well, I understood it's not so much fairness, it's the biggest bang for the buck for the county is what we're after with these dollars, and they're, I mean, that was your point, right?
Yes. Okay.
Residents of cities are residents of the county, and things that happen throughout the county benefit everybody. Okay, anything else?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Commissioner.
Sorry. I think just one other thing to consider is that one of the things that we were talking about as far as when there were municipalities that weren't awarded funds or may not have even applied for the funds at all, is that for our county to be successful, we feel like tourism needs to be spread out amongst the entire county.
Right.
And so, like, right now, there's a lot of pressure in the upper end of the county, and so, that's being realized that we actually would like to see it more dispersed into having actually more visitors into the lower end of the county. So, that was just one of the considerations we were talking about, is one managing the impacts of the amount of visitors currently in the Clealum Roslin area, as well as trying to bring additional visitors into the Ellensburg, Vantage, Kitata area.
I mean, at the end of the day, depending on how many grants you get, or how many grant applications you get in, the committee's going to be deciding on it based upon some metrics.
Yeah. And that, and that's a legitimate goal that can be factored into your weighting.
Yeah. I just wanted to make sure we were transparent in kind of the direction. When you were saying the biggest bang for the buck for the county, I think it also is part of that biggest bang is making sure that we're not putting too much pressure on one area of the county.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move to item four, which is the approval of the agenda. But first, I must ask, does anybody want any item, and this includes the audience, any item removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda, because that's actually what's our rules say. Anybody on council?
Not for me.
Okay, so we are at approval of the agenda as presented.
Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion second to approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion? Hearing none. All votes in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I two of vote aye opposed. That motion passes. Consent agenda, item five, page nine, or page six, excuse me.
Motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion to approve consent agenda as presented and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All votes in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I two of vote aye opposed. That motion passes. Move to item 6A, which is under Patience Protest and Communications, and this is a planning commission appointment, and there will be an opportunity for public comment.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Dan Carlson, Community Development Director. Yeah, I was just going to introduce Skylar Bissam-Rap. He's the recommendation for appointment to the Planning Commission. Skylar has a background in planning and architecture, and after meeting with him on August 22nd for an interview, the Subcommittee of the Planning Commission recommended him for this vacancy. And Skylar is tonight, if you want to come up and...
Hi, everyone. I'm Skylar Bissam-Rap. As Dan mentioned, I have a background in architecture, planning, and real estate development with an emphasis in affordable housing, about a decade of experience, five years of which are here in Kitata County. As the city and county continue to grow, and we start to see the effects of Puget Sound's housing crisis and affordability crisis spill over to our side of the mountains, this round of comprehensive planning revisions carries more weight than ever. It's key that we think carefully about how we balance this growth with the rural farming and ranching culture that makes this community special. As a trained planner, it's my belief that these issues are not a zero sum, but rather, through listening to stakeholders, researching trends, and deliberating thoughtfully about what we find, we can tell a story about Ellensburg that embraces its future without turning its back on its path. I'm honored to be considered for the Planning Commission to give input to the regulations and plan goals that seek to realize this story. Happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Any questions? Other than, thank you.
Thanks.
Is this a advise the mayor or make a vote?
Vote aye.
Okay, so we need a motion.
Motion to approve the appointment of Skylar Bissam-Rap to the Planning Commission.
I'll second.
We have a motion second to appoint Skylar Bissam-Rap to the Planning Commission. Is there any discussion? Oh, excuse me, is there any public comment? My bad. Okay, now.
Just a quick comment. I participated in the interview with Skylar, and I think we, this impressive way, I think the committee's excited to get his input on the Planning Commission, so I would say we're fortunate to have someone of his expertise available.
All votes in...
I would say, I work with Skylar on the County Homeless and Affordable Housing Committee. He's been an excellent member, has a great background, brings lots of good issues to the table. I'm happy to see him interested in the Planning Commission.
All votes in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I two of vote aye opposed. That motion passes. Before we move to item seven, just to go over this, Affordable Housing Commission, still a vacancy, two on Arts Commission, two for DEI, one for the Left Board, which is the Fire and Police Retirement, one for Lodging Tax. Is there still one for Planning in addition to who we just appointed?
I don't believe so. I think planning is full.
Okay, planning is full, and one for Utility Advisory Committee, which needs to be from the telecommunication thing, and we, one of the Environmental Commission is supposed to be an EHS.
Yeah. Mayor, so we haven't updated that since the last ordinance passed, changing the membership of some of those boards and commissions. At your next meeting, we'll have an updated matrix. So, there is, there is not an opening on the Environmental Commission at this point.
Okay. Move to item seven. Item's not on the agenda. Ms. Clemmon, I'll read my speech. Speaker's comments. There's nobody online, by the way, who indicated an interest in speaking, so we're not going to go through that. Three minutes, total time 30 minutes, extended by council. Don't identify yourself as a candidate for elective office. Make any statements which assist or discuss the campaign of a candidate for elective office, or discuss the campaign for or against a ballot proposition. Non-agenda items only address items on the registration form and must concern the city's business and over which the city council has control. Nice to speak. Speak, state your name, whether you live in Ellensburg, Kitata County, or elsewhere, whether you're representing yourself or others, and then the topic, and you've got meeting recording. Speakers, you know the caution.
Julianne Clemmon, Kitata County resident, speaking for myself. I'm speaking briefly here about the study session and the public recordings of meetings requirements. I was surprised that the council really would consider not recording the city council meetings any longer, especially with the ADA compliance laws coming up, because for those with mobility issues, and especially for those who are blind and deaf, it is very important to have access to the meetings in a way that is meaningful, and video and audio recording would be very important to the deaf culture, as sometimes closed captioning does fail in getting the point across of what's going on in the meeting. And I know that facial, having worked with the deaf community before, facial expressions are very important in also understanding, and there's a certain amount of lip reading in the deaf community that can be done. So, if closed captioning fails, that's a fallback for the deaf community. So, that's all I'd like to say. I'd really like to encourage you to find ways to continue keeping the public recordings of at least the city council meetings. It would be nice to have them for all of the commission meetings and committee meetings for those who can't make it, or even watch them on Zoom, because it's not a time of day that they're able to view that via Zoom. And so, that's, I'd like you to consider different funding venues of how you could accomplish that, since equity is so important. Thank you.
Anybody else in the audience who wishes to speak on a non-agenda item? Okay, we have no public hearings. Item 9A, page 45. This is ordinance 4969, second reading and potential adoption, utility billing disconnect notices, and there will be an opportunity for public comment.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. I'm Keith Bassett with the City's Finance Department. As you know, the city provides utility services to approximately 11,000 customers across six municipal utilities, and the city's responsible for timely and accurate reading of those utility meters, timely and accurate billing of customers, and cashing and collections of utility billings. Current city code enforces the monthly utility counts are due and payable within 22 calendar days following the date of the mailing of the bill. Customers that do not pay by that date are deemed delinquent, which sets off a chain of activities and notices to the affected customer. Ultimately, 14 business days after the final notice is mailed to the customer, the city moves towards disconnecting water or electric service, depending on the season. And the first step of the disconnection process is to provide notice to the customer that the disconnection is forthcoming. Currently, each of those notices is hand-delivered to the premise by a city meter reader, which is creating a backlog and preventing timely processing of disconnections. The ordinance will change policy to allow the notice to be provided telephonically when possible, still provided with a paper notice hand-delivered if the telephonic connection isn't possible. Staff suggests a motion to conduct second reading and adoption of ordinance 4969, amending utility billing disconnect notices. Any questions?
Questions of staff?
I have a question. So, currently, what happens if, I'm just envisioning potentially scenarios where someone's in the hospital, they don't get the mail, they don't get, they don't see the door tag? What, what do you guys do? Is it a shut-off? And maybe, I mean, with electricity or heat, that potentially means broken pipes? It just, what happens?
Yes, that's a great question. From the first delinquency to disconnect, we're looking at over a month of time, and ensuring that a customer that is unable to receive their mail, or pay their utility bill, or receive a phone call, wouldn't receive any notice that their service is going to be disconnected. In the case that someone is in the hospital, frequently, those individuals or their family members, friends will reach out to city utilities and make arrangements to ensure that either payments arrangements are made, or some other accommodation is granted within our policies.
And just to point out, this policy wouldn't change the outcome for the person in the hospital.
I understand, other than potentially it alerts neighbors versus a phone, which is, doesn't. But, but I guess they wouldn't, well, if it goes to voicemail, you are just assuming that they heard it, and that's my concern.
I would just offer, too, that staff have the ability, the finance director does, to reverse charges and actions if there is a hardship. And so, if someone did not receive that, we can make an administrative decision to actually reverse that, and we work with people all the time on their bills.
And I think one additional comment about that visible notice cuts both ways. One of the more frequent calls we get is when somebody gets a door tag, the embarrassment they feel about having it on their front door when they just neglected to pay their bill.
So, I just wanted, I was trying to clarify in my mind. So, with the proposed revision, we still do the door tag as the last item B is the, after the first few steps, right?
No, then that was my concern.
Well, it says...
But only if...
A tag for disconnect shall be delivered, or a notice will be placed in the primary, or, or...
Yeah, so if telephonic contact is made, a phone call, or a voicemail successfully delivered, that would be the final notice of disconnection.
So, if that fails, then the tag is there.
Correct.
And that gives the neighbors a week to notice that there's something.
No, no, no.
No.
The voicemail is in lieu of the tag that goes through.
No, I thought what I heard was we have to make actual contact with the person, not just leave a voicemail.
A voicemail would be sufficient.
And, yeah, I would, I would want you to actually make contact and have someone call back.
Hang on, that's not a question. We'll have that conversation in deliberation.
Okay, so to clarify that, the voicemail as written is sufficient. That's the last notification.
Correct.
Okay, questions of staff? Anybody in the audience? Nobody online. Okay, now we need a motion to consider before we amend.
Mr. Mayor, move to conduct second reading and adoption of ordinance 4969, amending utility billing disconnect notices.
Second.
We have a motion second to conduct second reading and adoption of ordinance 4969, which amends the city collection and disconnect notices for utilities. Now you can make an amendment.
I did not come prepared with the text of an amendment, but again, my concern is that there's an assumption that someone got their voicemail, and, and I guess...
So, make the motion, and then we'll talk about it.
Well, I moved to amend to require actual contact over the phone before disconnect.
Need a second?
I'll second, but that, that's essentially only needed if the voicemail is, if, well, that...
If you leave a voicemail and someone calls back, that's a contact.
Yeah.
You're aware that people screen their calls, and you're aware that they might miss a door tag, too.
Yeah, trying to think how the staff...
But it's one more piece.
Did he second? Did David second?
That's it?
No, he's still thinking.
You seconded it. You said, "I second," and then you started talking.
Let me back out of that second, and until we get it clarified. I want to make sure we don't create more difficulty for staff.
Okay, so we're, we need a second for the motion before we discuss.
For the amendment?
For the amendment.
For the amendment.
Okay, hearing none, we are back to the original ordinance language, 4969.
So, to clarify, everyone, this is, this is a resource issue as far as our city staff being able to get door tags or make contact with everyone. You're not going to be able to. There's unfortunately going to be the possibility that someone does not get contact. What they are outlining is the best process that they have with the resources they have. Making contact via phone is... Make a contact via phone as quickly as possible, and, and if that doesn't work out, then we go to the door tags. The contact of whether you're getting to somebody that's physically on the phone versus voicemail is difficult, and I understand exactly where you're coming from, Nancy, but this is trying to deal with this many residents in a timely fashion. The bigger concern would be if we don't do, if we relegated to physical phone contact, somebody on the phone, or a door tag, there's a possibility they may not get to all the door tags that they need to because of the amount that are out there.
I understand, my, the proposal was though, you, you leave a voicemail, because nobody answers their phone, but you leave the voicemail.
Right.
And, and if someone gets it, they call back.
Or they don't, because they don't want to connect, they don't want to connect the dots. People avoid phone calls, and people pull door tags off their doors, and people don't pay attention to their mail, when they don't like the message sometimes.
Yeah, and you can't force, and you can't force a behavior to answer it if they don't want to.
So could you, could we get a clarif, I'd like a slight clarification on the intent of item C, in terms of this is the sequence. So what I'm reading is, after all of that, which is a voicemail, if it's still unpaid after seven days. Now, my first question is, what's underlined, a confirmed disconnect telephone call, does that mean that a person, someone in staff is verifying that they did get a call back? Or no? What, how do you confirm the call if nobody actually responds?
So in, in section B, the addition, the, the added text defines confirmed means the telephone call was answered by a person, or staff was able to leave a voicemail?
Okay, so voicemail was sufficient. You get the right?
As true.
Yeah, I get that. Okay, okay. That, so that is sufficient, based on B, okay, I see where we're, okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Okay, we'll clear, call the roll, please.
Goodlow.
Yes.
Loquess.
No.
Miller.
Aye.
Palmer.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Elliott.
Yes.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Ellensburg, Washington relating to chapter 2.12, collection of accounts, utilities, and amending section 2.12.20 of the Ellensburg City Code.
Thank you. Item 9B, page 50. This is ordinance 4970, second reading and potential adoption amending the 2025-2026 biennial budget, and there will be an opportunity for public comment.
Good evening, again, Mr. Mayor and Council. Keith Bassett with the city's finance department. The proposed supplemental budget ordinance before you for second reading is a routine budget amendment, and principally amends the 2025-2026 biennial budget to reflect changes in operational requirements and adjustments to capital project plans approved through prior council action since the last supplemental budget, along with modifications to the annual budget as proposed by the city manager. Staff described the contents of the ordinance at your last meeting before you conducted first reading, and detailed figures for each item by fund are included in table one, beginning on page 53 of the packet, and a summary of all items by fund and year identified in tables two and three, which are pages 58 and 59. The only change from first reading is the addition of $20,707 to the 2026 budget, based on the receipt notice of the city's share of Keddes County EMS 2026 budget. There was some discussion, including impacts of resolution 2025-17 related to the pay plan amendment at your last meeting, and I want to clarify that those were included in the ordinance for first reading. The proposed amendments maintain anticipated 2025 and 2026 ending fund balances within the required fund balance thresholds. Staff success suggests a motion to conduct second reading and adoption of ordinance 4970 amending the 2025-2026 biennial budget. Any questions?
Council, questions of staff? Hearing none, anybody in the audience? Nobody virtually. Council?
Mr. Mayor, move to conduct second reading and adoption of ordinance 4970 amending the 25-26 biennial budget.
Second.
We have a motion second to conduct second reading and adoption of ordinance 4970, which amends the 2025-26 biennial budget. Is there any discussion?
Just a comment that this gets us moving in the right direction, as far as some of the things that we want to do as a city that we've been talking about, so this is a good thing. Thank you, staff.
Okay, we'll clear, call the roll.
Goodlow.
Yes.
Loquess.
Yes.
Miller.
Aye.
Palmer.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Elliott.
Yes.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Ellensburg, Washington amending the 2025-2026 biennial budget for the city of Ellensburg, Washington, as set forth in ordinance 4950 to adjust appropriations in the city's funds.
Item 9C, ordinance 4971. This is first reading. This would amend the city code regarding ADUs or accessory dwelling units, street improvements, and impact fees. There will be an opportunity for public comment.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Lilly Frye, Housing Program Manager. Before you tonight are two final pieces of our compliance with Engrossed House Bill 1337 on accessory dwelling units. These are, first, the exemption of curb, gutter, and sidewalk or frontage improvements requirements for ADU building permits, specifically required under 1337, and its enacting RCW. And, secondly, an added note to the code section for traffic impact fees, that ADUs will be charged at 50% of a single-family residence. The city is required to make these changes by the end of 2026. This ordinance would bring us into compliance before the deadline. As you may remember, council passed ordinance 4953 in January 2025, which included the land development code section changes to implement House Bill 1337, allowing two ADUs per lot with a principal unit. As some developers have asked about this outstanding compliance step, and other permit applications were received, we wanted to align the additional code sections covered in this ordinance for increased predictabilities for developers looking into ADUs. The city would see a small decrease in revenues from traffic impact fees per ADU. In addition, for projects where the city might have previously required, would have previously required or approved a deferral of curb, gutter, and sidewalk improvements, that is where an ADU added sufficient property value for these to be required, the city will no longer be able to require developers to make these improvements. The exemption in this ordinance applies only to ADU building permits. If a home renovation increases the value requiring these improvements, or a new development is planned with ADUs on the property, the frontage improvement requirements would still apply. Staff recommends conducting first read, first reading of ordinance 4971, amending city code regarding accessory dwelling units, street improvements, and impact fees, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Council, questions of staff?
So, so why are, why are we doing this early? Why, why not just wait until we're required to?
Because we already did the land development code pieces, this is the public works pieces that essentially accompany that, so somebody who is interested in doing ADUs now would be looking at their, see that we are required to make these changes in the future, and are just looking for that predictability. So essentially, if we're sort of supporting ADU in line with our housing action plan, which encourages ADUs, then this is another step to sort of incentivize and support that ADU development.
But, but curbs, gutters, and sidewalks are important too.
They absolutely are. And increased density will, you know, increase demand for curbs, gutters, and sidewalks. We are required to do this by next year. It's up to you guys on when.
Any other questions of staff? Anybody in the audience? Nobody online? Council?
Mr. Mayor, move to conduct first reading of ordinance 4971, amending city code regarding accessory dwelling units, street improvements, and impact fees.
Second.
We have a motion second to conduct first reading of ordinance 4971, which amends the city code for ADU, street improvements, and impact fees. Discussion?
Nancy, I totally understand your point regarding the impact fees and what we need. We're almost to the end of the year, so we have to be in compliance. This is a bigger thing that we need to watch, as Lilly kind of talked about. It is a minuscule amount as far as lowering our traffic impact fees, but that means that we, as a city, will have to make that up somewhere else down the line, and so we have to be cognizant of that. So unfortunately, this is something that's bestowed upon us from the state, and so we're having to deal with it, but it's something that we're going to have to watch, because some of those upgrades that we're going to need to take care of, unfortunately, it's Robin Peter to pay Paul.
So, so it's not just the traffic impact fees, it's the actual construction of those curbs, gutters, and sidewalks? I don't know how many that would ever affect, and I suppose the, the downside to waiting until we're required to is then some developer who was interested in doing an ADU would also just wait until next year. And it's not the end of this year, it's the end of next year, right? So it's eight, 18 months away.
Okay.
So, but with only a handful of ADUs per year being developed, the likelihood is pretty small that it's going to be a big deal, but I, yeah.
So, so your concern here is, hey, there might be some people that are interested in doing ADUs, and will be able to still recoup the traffic impact fees. So my counter to that is, we did have a very successful ADU meeting with the public the other day, and a lot of people showed up, a lot, that were interested in it. So this might be appealing to them if they were going to pursue an ADU. So to, to your point, you have a very good and logical point, it's just.
We, we have 18 months of, which may end up being maybe one or two ADUs of, that, that don't put their sidewalks in.
Right.
And that means that the city has to, or that it's one of those places that, that doesn't get done for a long time, and people live there, and, yeah.
I guess I would point out that there are single-family residences on those properties, and they don't have sidewalks.
Yes.
And so we're, we're only talking about the ADUs and the delta between what happens today, which is 16 months away from being in compliance, and I, I fully support, just moving forward, if we're going to incentivize ADUs, we have to incentivize ADUs.
Yeah, I mean.
And some of it is state mandated.
I just have a little gripe, but I talked my, I mean, the, the logic is there, so.
Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I two of what I opposed, that motion passes.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Ellensburg, Washington relating to accessory dwelling units, ADUs, and street improvements and impact fees to amend sections 4.6.60 and 14.4.170 of the Ellensburg City Code.
Page 71, item 11A, Addison Place Affordable Housing Agreement with HopeSource. There will be an opportunity for public comment.
Before you, this, so, good evening again, Lilly Frye, Housing Program Manager. Before you this evening is the Affordable Housing Agreement and attachments for the Addison Place acquisition by HopeSource. On May 19th, council authorized preparation of these agreement documents for a fall closing on the property. Your authorization would allow HopeSource to acquire four duplexes for a total of eight nearly complete housing units, and manage them as affordable properties for housing, for households earning no more than 60% of area median income for the next 25 years. To be eligible, a household would need to make no more than the income maximum for one or two people based on the household, based on the unit size, and to have a member in a qualifying category based on the authorizing legislation, such as a senior, veteran, person with disabilities, homeless, or at risk of being homeless or domestic violence survivors. This acquisition includes six studio or efficiency units of about 412 square feet, and two one-bedroom units of about 575 square feet. Since this is an acquisition project, tenants will be able to move in this fall. The city would contribute $1,200,000, and the county would contribute $250,000 for the property. The agreement documents have been developed with our outside counsel to protect the city's financial interest in the property, and ensure we're able to monitor all of the requirements for our funding sources, while enabling HopeSource to operate the building in line with their housing goals. The agreement is structured as a forgivable loan with no payments, and 1/25th of the loan amount forgiven annually based on agreement compliance. There is annual reporting on resident qualifications and financials that will keep the city in the loop on the project, and ensure compliance with those rules for sales tax funds. You received feedback from a member of the public, asking about the annual monitoring form. We have agreed on a format for this with HopeSource, and it was excluded from the attached documents in error, and there are copies on the dais for your reference if helpful. Staff recommends authorizing the city manager to sign the Affordable Housing Agreement and attachments with HopeSource, and to fund the property acquisition. Bill Hinkle is here from HopeSource this evening to answer any questions you may have about the project, and Chris or I can address any questions about the agreement documentation.
So let's start with questions about the agreement and documentation. Any questions about the project for Mr. Hinkle? He's online.
Hey, Bill, can you hear me?
I can hear you well, thank you, sir.
If you don't mind, just talking very high level a little bit about the project, what brought the interest of HopeSource to it, just so that folks can understand why this is something that you guys wanted to pursue.
Well, we're looking, you know, we have a number of projects going on right now. We have, we have three projects in the county. This is the first one getting done, and this is providing for a population that's a little higher than the other two projects, where we're going for 30 and 50%. This goes up to 60% AMI, and it's something we could do right now. I think one of our strategies at HopeSource is, is to be an opportunist. When there's opportunity for housing that we can latch on to, well then, let's take a look. And so the owner, the builders, started early and came to us and said, "Would you be interested?" And through a number of, a couple months getting through this, and we said, "You know, this looks like a good project, and it's nice to have something that's up and at a lower cost than some of these tax credit projects. This is kind of a standard that I really like, because we're using local money, providing for local people, and we're not sending big dollars out of the state." Outside of that, I'm just very happy with the way the staff worked with us. We did a bit of a back and forth, but both Lilly and your attorney, city attorney, were really helpful in the process.
And what's the, do you have a rough approximation of the dollar per square foot or dollar per door for this build?
About, well, roughly 187 a door. You know, after all, the cost and stuff, it might be a little more, but it's, that was our initial figure.
And just for context, for the folks that are in the audience, what does that compare to some of your other affordable housing properties? Is that higher or lower?
It's not quite half, but al- almost half of one that we're doing, and it's quite a bit less than another that's over 700,000 a door, not in Ellensburg. And those, you know, those are hard to explain for me, they're, they're tax credit projects, there's a lot of HUD requirements there, and, and process that just drags on and on. It's just, you know, as you can imagine, it's very frustrating sometimes, but that's another conversation to have at a higher level than me. That's all I got.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you. If you could stay on, Bill, I'm going to open this up to the audience for comment.
Sure.
Nobody in the audience, and nobody publicly, so we'll move back. Council, if we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, move to authorize the city manager to sign Affordable Housing Agreement and attachments as attached, or in, in substantially similar form with HopeSource and fund property acquisition.
Second.
We have a motion second to authorize the city manager to sign the Affordable Housing Agreement and attachments with HopeSource and fund property acquisition. Any discussion?
I just want to acknowledge and thank Matt Stalder for bringing this project forward and being interested in affordable housing in Ellensburg.
Thank you. Nothing further? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I two of what I opposed, that motion passes. Item, thank you, Bill. Item 11B, page 140. Who, Gary?
He's on through.
Oh, he's up next. I was thinking he was quiet. We're not going to leave Gary out. Okay, don't go anywhere, Gary. Okay, we're on item eleven B, which is page one forty. This is a public facility district for funding recreational facilities. There will be an opportunity for public comment.
All right, good evening, Mayor and Counsel, Heidi Baron, Surtaway City Manager. I'm going to walk you through a discussion item tonight, and we're going to take our time with this a little bit, but I won't belabor it. And then I have a couple of friends that are joining us from the Upper County Recreation Center that originally brought this discussion to us that would like to weigh in on why this is important for us. And so we're going to talk a little bit about public facilities districts. This is not the first time we've talked about funding options for, as we look at recreational facilities or other community needs. A couple of years ago, as we were looking at the budget, we looked at adding our real estate excise tax, the second quarter of a percent for recreational facilities. We know that in our community, our discussions with the budget this last year has been our general fund is being crunched over time. And if we're going to continue to fund our basic services, we're going to have to look for new revenues. And specifically, if we're going to look at replacing large facilities, we've had a lot of discussions about our pool, we've had discussions about our fieldhouse. Those are the two sort of competing priorities when it's come to recreation facilities. We know we're going to need new revenue in order to meet some of our long-term community goals. This is one of those options, and there's an opportunity right now to potentially work together on some timely issues that might deliver some services to our communities. So I'm going to talk a little bit about a public facilities district. I might use the acronym PFD. And so this is something that's authorized by state law. We'll go into why it's important, and just to back up a little bit, reminding you of your city council priorities. One of your priorities was to look at dedicated parks funding, too. Again, parks is one of our general fund, general government services, and we spend a lot of dollars in that area, and those dollars compete with our other basic essential services like our police and our library services, and again, general government, our streets as well. So it was one of your council priorities, looking for dedicated. One of your other discussion points has been we'd like to look at sales tax as a priority as opposed to property tax. And so making sure that the folks who are traveling through our community are helping contribute to those services as much as possible. And this, this public facilities district offers that. And the other discussion we've had is we provide services for folks who don't, who don't just live in the city, for folks outside the city. And is there a way to help folks contribute to our city facilities that they're using? And so, for instance, at the pool, we talk about folks who don't, aren't city residents, pay a differential in their fees, but fees only cover a very small percentage, less than twenty percent of what it costs to operate that pool. And so thinking through, is there another way to help allow our county residents to participate in funding facilities countywide as well? So we're going to talk about what a PFD is and just simple steps to formation. What potentially, what recreation facilities could potentially benefit from this type of funding, specifically in Ellensburg and Lower County here? And also, what are we talking about in numbers? And so we'll go through some scenarios and some estimates, and we'll talk about some parameters around those, and then the next steps. Tonight is not a decision for you to say, I want a public facilities district. It's do you want to continue the conversation as we explore this? Because it will involve more conversations with other parties across the county and public engagement as well. So back to what is a public facilities district? Again, cities can only do those things that are authorized by state law, essentially. And so our revised Code of Washington, RCW thirty-five fifty-seven, allows cities to create public facilities districts. And then RCW thirty-six one hundred, which is also part of your packet, allows for counties to contribute or to develop and create public facilities districts. These are intended to be, to fund large-scale facilities, and I'll go through some examples of what that might mean. Oftentimes convention centers or regional facilities. When I was in Thurston County, the Hands-on Children's Museum and the Regional Athletic Complex were two, two projects that were founded countywide for that community under the public facilities district. So we're going to focus on the RCW thirty-six one hundred because that's what we're going to talk about, kind of countywide opportunity. There are situations that you'll see from some of the examples. There are cities that have created public facilities districts and then also participated in larger, broader facility, public facilities districts as well. So they can layer on top of one another. And so there's a fair amount of flexibility when it comes to this structure. And remember that a public facilities district is like a tax, it's a special taxing district. Essentially, it's a municipal corporation. And so it has a board of directors that acts as a governing body and decision maker for that entity. And so it essentially becomes, like you were talking about fire districts, an overlay and becomes its own, its own operating, local government, essentially a municipal corporation. They can own property, they can make contracts with other entities for financing. So a lot of flexibility is incorporated into the law. And to that end, a public facilities district is very flexible. I actually learned a number of things. We had the opportunity to meet with a legal specialist that talked about the extreme flexibility of public facilities districts. My understanding of them had to be that the district itself had to own property and own the facility that it was creating. The district can actually act as a vessel, essentially, to fund and work with other nonprofits according to the law, private and public entities to finance and essentially operate public facilities. And again, one of the parameters is that the facilities have to be over ten million dollars in cost, so. PFDs are typically funded by sales tax, and so this is something that voters don't, when created under the county statute, the county, the voters don't create the public facilities district, but sales tax measures or bond measures that would require voters, those actually have to go to the voters. And so the entity can't say, we're going to impose a sales tax. That has to go to the voters. But to create under RCW thirty-six one hundred, the county actually creates that structure. And then the public facilities districts actually can, can charge other facilities. If they're operating, for instance, a convention center, think of the Seattle Convention Center, they can actually charge parking fees. And so they can actually levy certain types of charges themselves that go to support that district. So there's a lot more for us to learn and explore about this, but typically, public facilities districts are funded through sales tax, voted sales tax. And again, the formation of the PFD does not require voter approval, but most revenue sources do require that voter approval. So very simple steps to, for if the county were to create a countywide public facilities district. And again, we're talking about this because we've been approached by the folks in the Upper County for their recreation center, saying, we think this is an opportunity to maybe fund our recreation facilities together countywide. And so if you do recall, at our last, our 2025 legislative priorities list, we had actually worked with that group to establish a change in the law that we would allow for entities that are larger than cities or smaller than counties to create public facilities district. But that did not move through to, into legislation during this last session. So, so approaching this from a different perspective, from a partnership perspective, is really the focus. So creation, just a couple of things about the creation of a countywide public facilities district. There is an independent financial feasibility review that's required by the Department of Commerce before any public facilities district is created. They want to make sure you've done your homework, you know what, what project or projects you're going to be funding, you know what partners are going to be a part of this. And so you have a, a framework essentially to make sure that this is successful. There are, have been instances where public facilities districts have failed to meet their bond requirements. And so, so there are some risks allowed or associated with this. But the state, one of the steps is to make sure the Commerce does a review of your proposal and that you've done your homework to prepare for that and mitigate the risks associated with it. And then, as I mentioned, the, the PFD is essentially established by a resolution of the county commissioners if you're doing a countywide PFD. And it has to be coextensive with the boundaries. And so again, it's going to be using the boundaries of Kidda Test County, if this is the process. Under state law, based on our county population and based on our city population, the board itself for the public facilities district would be composed of five members. And again, these would be the decision makers for this entity. There'd be two members that would be appointed by the Board of County Commissioners. There would be two members, because Ellensburg is greater than forty percent of the population. Ellensburg would actually appoint two members to that board, and then the four members together would appoint the fifth. And those are typically four-year terms, and that's your governing board for the, for the PFD. And again, as I mentioned, formation does not require voter approval. Any, any sales tax levy, your sales tax measure would require that to go forward. And that also does require the, the Department of Commerce review as well. So again, making sure that you're doing your homework at every single step. I did include in here just the list, and it's actually in your packet as well, the steps for the Commerce review. It's a pretty straightforward project and process to talk about what are the areas, what sort of, what homework have you done, essentially? So this would take a little bit of time to put together a proposal as well. Examples, as I mentioned, of public facilities districts, they're all around the state. There's an association of public facilities district, there's a lot of support out there. And they fund a variety of services and facilities. And typically, again, they're for large regional facilities. For instance, like the Three Rivers Convention Center in Kennewick. And as I mentioned, an example for the Tribe Cities Regional Public Facilities District, they actually created an overlay. Kennewick and Richland have their own public facilities district, but they have an overlay for their aquatic center. They have a regional economy and have worked together to, to deliver that service together. So again, lots of flexibility. Another example locally would be the Yakima Convention Center. And so that's a, that's a district that, that helps to create tourism. And then the Greater Renatchee Regional Events Center, which is one that actually got into trouble, and there was a Supreme Court, a state Supreme Court decision, I believe. And so again, that's sort of driven some of the policies around making sure folks do their homework in the Department of Commerce reviews. Great. So if, if we were looking at, so what could this potentially mean for our county, looking at what type of revenues? Most recently, we had the Kitcom passage of the two-tenths of a percent. The maximum levy for a public facilities district for sales tax, given our population and RCW currently, would be two-tenths of a percent. And so we're just going to use that for our example here. If we were to look at the sales tax countywide, and we looked at current, I think, numbers from this year, it's estimated that this could bring in four million dollars in revenue per year. And again, sales tax, remember, it can be elastic. And so when your economy slows down, typically you'll see sales tax change as well. So, so if we're looking countywide at four million dollars, and then the question is, you know, how would that be split up? If we're thinking about projects in Upper County, a project in Upper County, a project in Ellensburg, how might that be split? There are several different ways to slice and dice it. That would be a future conversation. But for, for, for conversation's sake, we can talk about fifty percent split. And so you're talking about maybe two million dollars of debt service potential annually to look at what this might mean for funding facilities. So if we look at our two main priority facilities for the last couple of years, again, when we lost the fieldhouse, the pool replacement sort of dropped down because we had a timeline to meet for rebuilding the fieldhouse in order to get our insurance settlement at the replacement value. And so that has been a priority. We've done some early planning with that project. And at this point, with our, with our settlement, we have about a seven million dollar funding gap as we looked at the potential for doing that lease-lease-back model. And so that's the number we're going to use just for the exercise today. And then we've talked about the operations and maintenance at about a one million dollar annual amount. And then if we're looking at our Kidda Test Valley Pool, I'm going to use the twenty-five million dollar number. I will tell you, that's probably low. We started with that, and we did our estimates based on that. That probably doesn't include soft costs, which could be up to thirty percent of that. But for our exercise today, we're just going to use twenty-five million. And I do have some comparables because we haven't, we, we have, it's the best we have at the moment for how much would it cost to replace the pool. And again, our operations and maintenance is about a million dollars a year also on the pool. So, so again, based on other projects, we do believe that the pool is about twenty-five million. If you look at how people, how folks are building their pools, they're typically, they're looking at some of the, you know, the easy access, they're looking at play centers and spray pads and things like that in pools. Sometimes when we say, what do we want, our eyes grow and the number, the cost also grows just based on other factors and other pools that have been built recently. We're going to use that number as a good, solid starting point. And realizing that when we're talking about public facilities district and when we're comparing ourselves to other pools, too, public facilities district, the dollars collected and the projects become public projects, and that means we have public bidding requirements, prevailing wage requirements. And so projects that were done, for instance, the project in Yakima with the YMCA that was done, they have the ability to work outside that scope. And so they can often, their projects are, can come in at a lower cost than something that we do strictly through the public. So, so there will be escalating costs compared to others. And then we haven't made decisions on our pool about is that, you know, the replacement at the same location, or is it another location? Because there are site development costs that would be associated with that as well. So again, knowing that we can also scale our design elements. So just a few examples of pools, I'll do these very quickly. Southwoodby Island, this is, oh, boy, this is fairly recent, about twenty-four thousand square feet. Our pool right now is just over twenty thousand, our pool facility is over twenty thousand. About a twenty-seven million dollar project. And again, I believe that was completed fairly, or is in the process of being completed. The Pasco Aquatic Center, again, very large facility, forty-seven thousand square feet. It was about a forty million dollar project, and they're estimating that'll open in 2026. And so it's, again, fairly extensive facility. Shore Aquatic Center, this was a renovation, and so again, they went from fifteen thousand to thirty thousand square feet, and that was completed in 2020. I will tell you, project costs since that time have escalated between thirty and fifty percent. And so that type of facility would cost more, but it was an example of a renovation and expansion. University of Washington, actually, we did their intramural activities pool and their locker rooms. And this was done with a design-build model, and again, completed a couple of years ago. So about twenty-three thousand, twenty, excuse me, twenty-three million, about a comparable size. And then the Yakima Aquatic Center, it's fairly large, sixty-five thousand square feet. Twenty-two million, we've also seen estimates other places closer to twenty-eight or thirty million. Again, partnership, private, and so they, they would be able to do a little bit more than we could with a public entity. And Linwood was another example, about twenty-five million. But that was, again, that's over a dozen years old. And so that number would come in much larger today. All right. So we did some estimates on debt service. And when we start talking about, okay, what does it mean? We don't always wrap our heads around what is twenty-five million or what is fifty million. And so looking at what are annual debt service payments? Because that's what we have to budget in every year, too. Typically, you do debt service for the life of the facility. And so that's why we don't like to do maintenance bonds and things like that because you need to make sure you're extending and make sure you're getting the value out of, of that facility. Looking at, if we're talking about the, I'm going to break these down, and then I'm going to put them together, the seven million, the gap for our fieldhouse facility, and this would be a lease-lease-back. And what would it cost to potentially lease that back but do debt service on the, the funding gap in that? And so again, we're using a debt, some debt service assumptions, twenty-year at five percent. We're looking at about six hundred, a little over six hundred thousand per year. We're looking at about 600, a little over 600,000 per year. 30-year is a little higher interest, but a little bit lower payment. And we did the exercise previously, looking at maybe reconfiguring some of our current expenditures for our parks facilities. We think that we can reconfigure how we're doing some of our services and move some of those into the facility. There's about a half a million dollar gap that we need to figure out how to cover for operations and maintenance on a regular basis. Debt service, again, these are just, as an example, if we're looking at the pool facility, looking at about 25 million construction, I'm just going to use that straight number, for debt service on 20 years, we're looking at 2.2 million per year. And for a 30-year, at 1.9 million per year. And so again, O and M, currently, we have that folded into our budget. And so looking at, as we scale things or change things around, making sure that we can afford to do complete O and M over time. So if we fold those two together, looking at a 20-year or a 30-year, looking at 2.8 million, 2.4 million potentially on debt service for those two types of facilities. And so just, that was a simple math exercise about if we're talking about a public facilities district and potential, revenue potential, what could we potentially fund with that? So here's where I would like to invite, I have a couple of friends in the audience. We have Gary Burt, who's joined us online, and then we have Paul Cantwell, who's also here from the Upper County, Kedittas, or Upper Kedittas County Community Recreation Center. These folks have been working on this design and facility and working on their capital stack for a while. This public facilities district is an important part of their financial planning for this facility. And I believe they can talk about the scope. I think they're, and I won't even give you a number, you can talk about the total cost of the facility. And so I would like to invite Paul to join us right now, and Gary might want to weigh in, if you're okay.
Thank you, Heidi, for that great summation and for your excellent partnership. Mr. Mayor, Council, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. I am, as advertised, Paul Cantwell, and I am a resident of the City of Cleelam. I am among the leadership of the Upper Kedittas County Recreation Center Alliance, and I am also the Chair of the Cleelam City Planning Commission. I wear all three hats as I address you this evening. As noted, Gary is on the line, and I am sure he'll have much to contribute. But what I would propose, subject to your approval, is to make a quick, prepared statement expressing our support for this proposal generally, and then we can answer any questions that you may have. So, thank you very much. I and other leaders of the Alliance have had the opportunity to consult with the members of your great city staff, Heidi principal among them. And we have had the opportunity to review and consider carefully the staff report on the creation of a public facilities district and the motion contained therein. We agree with the report and the motion, and we endorse it in the strongest possible terms. We concur fully with the suggested strategy of the formation of a countywide public facilities district. We judge it to be legally sound, and we have consulted with some of the foremost experts in state municipal law. Indeed, we believe it to be the best way to proceed. It is also sound public policy and affords the opportunity to proceed, very importantly, in a manner already prescribed by the legislature, with vitally important public projects in the most expedient way possible. It is especially important, it is an especially initiative in an environment of greatly diminished public resources. And perhaps most importantly, it allows you in Ellensburg and the leaders in the upper county to be able to look at our residents and tell them that we are working together meaningfully on important issues that will improve their quality of life and outcomes. As you may know, the Alliance has been working on the Rec Center project for more than five years. We have the City of Cleelam's support, so too of South Cleelam and Roslyn. We have received more than $2 million of public funding already and are due to receive $2 million more. The County Lodging Tax Advisory Council judged our application for significant funding favorably. We enjoy immense public and political support. Both of our state representatives and our state senator were in the trenches with us trying to get House and Senate bills creating a PFD across the finish line, but the clock showed zeros before we were able to do so. But now, we have the great fortune to work with you, the City of Ellensburg, to provide facilities our residents truly need and deserve. Let's not let the clock run out on us this time. I am pleased to answer your questions. I thank you for your support. We look forward to working with you to achieve great things. Thank you.
Council, questions?
Just curious, the PFD is really great as far as being able to tell a story and be able to say, hey, we're making those steps forward as a community. I'm wondering how this has helped out upper county when it comes to legislative matching as far as funding, being able to say, hey, we have a district that's going to be coming up with these funds. Will this increase the opportunity for, say, a match fund from the state in some capacity? Or is there a hope to be able to do that?
I think there is hope to be able to do that. I'd like to invite Gary into the conversation. I've been involved in the effort for the three years that I've been in Cleelam. Gary's got a long, long history, indeed. He's been thinking about this for better than 20 years and has been integrally involved for five, six, the last 10 years. So Gary, if you wouldn't mind, if you have comments for us and can answer that question specifically, we'd appreciate it.
Certainly. Honored members and council, I am thrilled that we are invited to speak to you tonight. And in light of the question about, will this enhance our ability to receive funding from the legislature? When we asked originally, we found that the public facilities district has to be coextensive to the entire county, we didn't think that could work because we weren't sure what the lower county would do. What we asked our legislators is, could we write some change into the law? And simple changes that would allow a county with less than a million folks, bifurcate the county and create a smaller public facilities district. And Representative put very nicely at one of the committee meetings we attended, he said, these folks are not here asking us for money, they're asking us for the opportunity to resolve their own problems. And I think we are looking, well, a public facilities district is job one. That's the first step to gaining some of the shortfall, mostly in operating costs for us. We will have to look for another for a bond issue. And that likely will be a Metropolitan Parks District. So short answer is, we have not considered going to the legislature for funding. Paul, sound right?
It does, yes. Thanks, Gary.
Additional questions?
Go ahead, Nancy.
I may have missed this, but so we're looking at a public facilities district. Ellensburg's interested in how we might build a pool and a fieldhouse. Are you all, would it also have a pool in the upper county? Or would, so we'd have a pool up there and a pool down here too? Okay.
Yes, ma'am. And this is, I failed to mention that this is truly a shovel-ready project in the very literal sense of it, that the plans are drawn, they're approved, we have gotten the city's approval for construction and the approval of the plan itself. It's a 53,000-foot facility. It is intended to have recreational facilities indoor and outdoor. It's intended to be for the use of all of our residents. As you know, our winters are cruel, the days are short, and our older population needs the ability to remain healthy, get exercise, et cetera. Our students, who are obese and have other issues, need the opportunity to have great, safe places to recreate, et cetera. So, yes, ma'am, we will have a swimming pool, we'll have wellness facilities, we've talked about counseling services and everything. It would be an extension in some ways of the facilities over at the school campus, which is a very short distance away, to allow for the entire community to be able to recreate safely and, like we said, improve the quality of their lives and outcomes as well.
Okay, thank you.
Just, I guess, process-wise, because we can't split the district, we got to go into this together. And I'm thinking there maybe needs to be, you have an organized alliance, and does it include the cities or representation from the municipalities as well? Or is it all volunteers?
We have an established alliance, but we have been in close contact with all of the government leaders of all of the municipalities. Gary and I and members of the Alliance have talked to the leaders, as I mentioned, in South Cleelam, in Cleelam, in Roslyn, et cetera. They've all expressed support for this project. And this is really, as Gary indicated, the public facilities district is job one. And if we can establish this quickly, it allows us then to begin to move that process along, and then we start with the formation, perhaps, of the Metropolitan Parks District, which funds the rest of the project as well. But as we all know, you know, we've been at this for five, six years now, the numbers will grow, people will not get healthier, the winters will not subside, the need will still be there. So we're trying to move expeditiously, but cautiously, correctly, of course. And this is a vital first step in being able to leap off onto those other areas that we need to accomplish.
So I guess what I'm thinking is that there needs to be, if we are all to approach the county commissioners and say, please pass this, we need to bring them a package that has an outline of what we agree on. And so we need, I guess, I'm not sure who at the table to discuss issues like, how do we apportion the funds and things like that?
The, one answer, one quick answer is that, yes, we will have those discussions and interlocal agreements, will we, what governs the relationships between all of the entities involved? Gary, I'm sure you had something to add?
Well, I was going to say, when we met with Heidi initially, that was exactly what she said. And we are prepared to do that. That's why we're here tonight, is we do understand that it has to be we. And we will, we will come down to it as often as we need and be as helpful as we can. When you look at the makeup of the public facilities board, you don't see the upper county listed. So we're putting a lot of great faith in the good people that get appointed to that.
And I guess I just wanted to point that out, that the county commissioners can form the district. What the district does is a product of who we appoint to the district and what funding levels, and that is a, the funding levels are obviously a public vote, and you have to tie that to projects that the public sees value in. But we can't put the cart before the horse. We can't make these decisions until the public facilities district is formed and funded. We can say, this is what we want to do, but we can't tell them to do it. They're appointees, and they make decisions.
Right, right. And I was, I was, I was thinking we would take sort of a fully formed plan to the commissioners, but what you're suggesting is, they just need to approve the PFD, and then the people we appoint make those decisions about how to split the funding and...
And then they sell it to the public. That's where the ILAs and stuff come into play, that, you know, we need to apportion this out. This needs to make sense for everybody. But we can't go into this promising that we're going to spend, you know, specific amounts of money on anything, because we haven't formed the facilities district, we haven't funded the facilities district, and we haven't appointed the people who are on the facilities district.
Who will make the decisions. Okay.
I had a question, if I may, specific to Cleelam and the City of Cleelam. I guess it's a two-part question. It appears that your upper county Rec Center process, as you've described, has been going forward for the last five years or so, and the PFD discussion is kind of the new kind of twist in the conversation. I guess my first question is, is there anything related to the City of Cleelam's legal quandary they find themselves in now in terms of their ability to commit financially or otherwise to an agreement, when we don't know if they will be dissolved as a municipality in some form or another? And I guess that would be applicable to your project by itself, your five years of work, but also the PFD as a partner. I mean, is there anything in what's going on? I know we don't control it, I'm just trying to get an idea where the landmines are.
Right, and indeed, the elephant in the room, right? It is the existential question of the day. As we see it in the Alliance, we know that Chapter Nine of the Federal Bankruptcy Code is a really interesting animal as it relates to municipalities. It gives the municipality the control to organize as they see fit. Now, certainly, there is oversight from the bankruptcy judge, and by the way, I am an attorney, but I'm not a bankruptcy attorney, and I'm not licensed in the state of Washington either. But we have taken a close look at this. And we believe that the city will be able to continue, they'll perform their essential functions, they'll do everything that they have to do in order to carry on operations. The city, for all five of those years, has expressed support for this project, and they have continued to express support for the contract. We've got legal agreements dating back to 2021, resolutions in '22, et cetera. So the interest of the city and the support of the city and certainly its residents has not waned in any way. Now, who's to predict exactly what a bankruptcy judge or magistrate or trustee, whoever's overseeing the process, will do? We don't know that exactly, but we do have confidence that this is something that the city will continue to support, that we're on solid legal footing, and will be good going forward.
Thank you.
Question?
Yeah. The 53,000-square-foot facility that you have planned up there right now, and I know that is a moving target, what is the total project cost estimate?
Five zero million.
Figured as much. And then what's the construction MAC of that? What's the hard cost of that 50 million?
Gary, can you help me out on that?
Hard costs such as?
The maximum allowable construction cost for that project. If the total project is 50 million, I'm guessing your hard cost is probably somewhere in the neighborhood of about 43 to 44?
That's kind of what we think. And then, on top of that, or I guess, along with that 50 million, we're trying to get commitments locally to cover at least 10 million of those dollars upfront. But I don't have the hard costs. I can certainly talk to our consultant who's watching it on a daily basis.
And by the way, our leadership, particularly Claire Nichols, who is the president of the Alliance and has formulated all the numbers, has given detailed dollar figures to the County Board of Commissioners previously. Because early on in the process, they asked about the financial viability of this project, and the numbers that we provided appeared to be sufficient for their purposes then, and I suspect now as well.
Statement that PFD is relatively new, that was one of our first attempts, was to try to make the county prosecutor agree that we could split the county. So we've been talking to the board ever since, and their concerns, or at least one of them, was, you folks are going to face a shortfall in operating cost. We need to be fully convinced that you are capable of operating and maintaining before you receive our support. And we've spent about three years, and PFD, the facilities district, is going to be a big part of that. Well, we've got a commitment from the city on lodging tax, a percentage of their lodging tax, at least for now, and we continue to try and raise funds locally as best we can. But no, PFD is the first place we went and looked.
And to complete the record, and I can put too fine a point on this, we did very well in the legislative process. Both of our representatives, our state senator, had companion bills in both houses. They sailed through the committees of jurisdiction with unanimous support, and we were ready to go on the floor. Gary and I and others were in Olympia on several occasions, meeting with people. And basically, it wasn't for lack of support, it was just that the clock ran out in that extended session that we couldn't get the bill passed. But otherwise, we were supremely confident that we were going to get it passed, and we certainly had great legislative support for it.
Could I ask one more follow-up question? I don't want to get too deep into your business, really, I don't. But on the 50 million, the big number, I was trying to align it in my mind to the challenges that we're having with our fieldhouse, smaller number, but it sounds like... having with our fieldhouse, smaller number, but it sounds like you've been successful, as have we, thanks to staff efforts and cobbling together money from various sources, but not enough. So, is your project entirely dependent on the voters approving a tax under PFD? Or will it die if the voters say no?
So it's a two-pronged approach, sir. On the PFD side of the House, it's the .2% sales tax, and that takes care of the operating funds. We estimate that, based upon revenue projections, we'll be able to bring in 56% of the money we need to continue operating the facility, and we expect that the .2% sales tax would get us up to the required figure to be able to operate it. And then, on the other side of the House comes the Metropolitan Parks District and property tax and bond levy, a levy and bond issue for the actual construction costs.
So your bonding is gonna be tied to your park district, not the PFD?
Correct.
Okay, I was just trying to, thank you, that helps.
Our voters are going to be, and we are being challenged, there are gonna be three elections before we can build the pool. One would be the PFD .02, one would be to form a Metropolitan Parks District, and the bond issue to build the pool. We know, we know this is gonna be a journey.
Thank you. Thank you.
So, we're gonna move to public comment, and before we get too deep into public comment, I wanna just, I'm kinda reading the room here. I seriously doubt that the council is going to do anything but ask to move forward on looking into a Public Facilities District, and I can't speak for the rest of the council, and we will have that conversation, but, so, is there anybody in the audience who wishes to speak? Okay, council.
Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna move for approval, continuation of partnership discussions to explore development of the county-wide Public Facilities District to fund recreational facilities in Ellensburg and Clealum/Roslyn.
Okay, motion second to continue the conversation for county-wide Public Facilities District, that's all you're getting from me. Okay, any discussion?
Thank you, the presentations, Gary, as well. It's helpful to get this kind of big picture.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I too will vote aye opposed. That motion passes. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Can I ask, though, what is the next steps? Is that just that vote forwarded to the commissioners for a formal ask, or what?
So, we'll get back together and talk about how we move forward. We're gonna have to do some homework and have some initial discussions about how we present this to the county commissioners and potentially other entities along the way, so we'll talk more.
I'm 12A, page 171, this is the manager's report, and sadly, no public comment.
Just sadly. All right, good evening, Mayor, and council again, how you doing, sorry, my city manager. Lots packed into the manager's report. We do have our annual increase in waste management, their adjustment. We asked them and worked hard with the franchise agreement to actually have one increase per year, and so they included the increase in transportation costs as well, so that schedule is attached to the manager's report. We do have our second community conversation coming up this Saturday, September 6th, that's from 1:30 to 3:30. It will be a repeat, there are some refinements based on the first discussions and essentially a repeat of the same process from the August community conversation, and as a reminder, that is all preparing for the October 4th Common Ground Workshop, and at your next meeting, I will bring you some framework for that workshop. We're trying to come up with some additional parameters for that, and so, to make sure that's organized and effective and transparent. So our goal is to publish and create some space on our website to make sure everybody can see the process and the progress as we move forward through this. And reminder today, thank you, council, for coming out and helping set up the Apex of the Wall at Heels, they had a nice procession through town, and I think there's some nice social media posts, what a wonderful opportunity to celebrate our veterans and their sacrifice, and so that is happening through Sunday, I believe, is takedown, and so the official opening is on, tomorrow's Wednesday, on Thursday morning, so, and it is open 24 hours. Check out their website for details and a detailed schedule. We do have coffee with council coming up on September 10th, 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. at the library. We have three different community surveys happening right now. We're updating our strategic plan for transit, so there's a transit survey, Parks and Recreation and Open Space, we actually, I believe, have a record response to that so far, that is open for a few more weeks. And then, our clean energy implementation plan, there's a public input workshop, and that's coming up this next week as well. Let me see here, what's the date? Oh, September 23rd, I guess that's in a couple weeks, and let's see here, a couple other things, we have a ton of construction happening right now, it's been a very productive year. What I'd like to do is schedule a couple of ribbon cuttings, we have some historic projects, the Water Street project has been the largest overlay project we've done. In addition, the sidewalk and bus stop in front of the county courthouse is completed, and it'd be nice to do a ribbon cutting there, so working on scheduling that this fall. And then, the Reacher Creek Levy, I will share out a photo, we had a flyover of that, and it is amazing project that has been over a decade in the works, and so we're gonna plan probably more into October, a ribbon cutting for that facility as well. So, lots of good things happening in the city.
Quick question?
Yes.
On the, the community conversation on the 6th, is, does that, I can't remember on the last one, does that have to be noticed as a council meeting?
We already noticed that.
So there's no restriction on?
Yes, yep.
Council members observing, okay.
Correct, yeah, and again, council members and planning commission members are welcome to attend, but observe only, please.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, council member reports.
Yes, thank you. Not a lot going on this month, except the rodeo, and that was a big deal, but we did have a LEF meeting, we have completed, I believe, our comparison of benefits with Humana policy and what we have in place, policy-wise, for the committee, and that works going really well. I attended the first community conversation, and I attended the employee appreciation lunch, and I just wanna say, it's really exciting to see the bike lanes on Water Street, and this collaboration that we've just finished talking about, it's just, it's fantastic, the way the upper county and lower county have come together on this project. We're doing the same thing with our economic development plan, and this county will be the benefactor of all of that collaborative work, realizing that we can't do all of this by ourselves, we need to work together, and as a member of COG, it's been really exciting to see that effort come together on the economic development plan. That's all I have.
Council member Thompson?
So, my commission meetings are coming up, landmarks are supposed to be this week and canceled, and parks is next, but I did have a real cool one here, not too long ago, I had done another ride-along, which I've done with EPD a number of times, and after that, Rich gave me the opportunity to come down to Kitcom, and I sat there for two hours listening to calls, and the level of appreciation just went through the roof. It was amazing to watch somebody go from taking a call because someone wants blankets taken off of horses because it's too hot, to immediately jumping into, you know, a call where you're offering CPR instructions, and then just jump into the next call without having, you know, there's no closure, it's just through the call, it's done, you don't know how that person did, and I found myself thinking about it two days later. So I can only imagine, when you're doing 12 hours on back-to-back-to-back days, yeah, the level of appreciation was just extraordinary, so if you ever get the chance, definitely do it, it's worth it, it definitely provided a, like I said, just a different level of appreciation, so thanks, Rich, for allowing me to do that.
Council member Little Quest?
I attended the LEF meeting, the Environmental Commission and Utility Advisory Commission meetings were canceled, which was good, because I was out of town, so I missed some other stuff that was important, but I did want to follow up on a comment from last meeting where they suggested, it was suggested that we explore putting advertising on bus shelters, and I just thought it would be good to have that discussion, and, because, I mean, I do see it on, in other communities, and as I recall, we used to have ads on our buses, so...
So, do you want that brought back as a future discussion? That's sort of a PTAC or a TAC, a committee discussion that we can move forward? And I will tell you, and this is just anecdotally, a lot of communities are moving away from two things with their transit, and one is ads on buses or bus stops. There's, usually there's a third party who manages the ad system, and there's a fair amount of administrative costs associated with those, and then the policies on, you know, who gets the ad on the bus, and so, so a lot of communities, when it was in Thurston County, the intercity transit moved away from that model because it was an administrative burden, and then, the other issue that most agencies move away from is the pay or the bus fare systems. Oftentimes, there's a huge administrative cost in those bus fares, and so a lot of communities, they're trying to incentivize transit, and so they moved away from those fare models as well. But we certainly can bring...
Yeah, I guess, I guess it's most appropriate to refer to the advisory committee to explore or look at before it would come back, and maybe we just read it in the minutes.
Done.
Council member Palmer?
Basin Fish and Wildlife, no update, Kitcom, I'm gonna let Rich handle that, solid waste, no meeting, STRI 90, no meeting, utility advisory is gonna be coming up, law and justice, no critical updates, and then affordable housing. We had a fantastic turnout for the ADU info session over at Hall Homes back on the 19th, that was remarkable, that was a packed room, I don't think I've actually seen Hall Homes that packed before for anything, it even, I mean, it was really packed. So the amount of people that are interested in ADUs was remarkable, it just tells us, from affordable housing commission standpoint, that we'll continue those dialogues, people are interested in it, they want the resources. Lilly and the city staff did a fantastic job putting that together, I'm looking forward to more conversations with partnering homeowners that are interested in doing that, with developers and financiers and things like that, so there is absolutely an opportunity here in our county to help grow our inventory, and so, gonna be through ADUs, so, nothing else.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, I had the pleasure of walking in the parade on Saturday, helping our Central Transit staff provide little frisbees to anyone who wanted them, so we, I think we got a lot of Central Transit, Ellensburg Central Transit frisbees out in the community, and it was, the weather was great, the parade route was full, I thought it was a great event, so I always enjoyed doing that. And then, I just wanted to, I know we all, most of us today were, I think honored is the right word, we were invited to participate in setting the apex for the Wall at Heels event out at the park, and I just wanted to thank, I know a lot of people are involved in organizing this, but primarily Henry and Russell, I think, were the two who spoke to us before, so a big shout-out to them, and I was really, I've seen the actual wall myself a couple of times, but I'm looking forward to this, when it comes up this week, and I just think it was a great opportunity for them to extend the offer to electeds in this county, and I think we had a great turnout. We had all three county commissioners, we had six Ellensburg council members, and we had one council member from Clealum, so I thought it was a great showing, so thank you to everyone who made time to be there.
And they actually made us work.
And they had to work, yes. It was actually, I'd say it was a lot of fun to lift the heavy bars and beams and things, but, you know, it was 99 degrees, so...
The pounding, the stakes and the ground, that was the most...
They did most of the heavy work, thanks, that's all I have.
Take out your frustration.
So, a couple of things, the Kitcom board meeting will actually be 9/11, out at the station on Vantage Highway, if anybody wants to attend, there's a virtual option as well. In terms of the employee appreciation lunch, that's a favorite thing mine to do every year, we used to do a breakfast and a lunch, but I like the lunch, it's really cool, and that's fun. Rodeo, I will tell you, from a public safety standpoint, it was pretty mellow this year, I think we avoided the hot weather, which helps, few injuries, few illnesses, but reasonably under control. I do want to sort of publicly ask for the city manager's compensation to be placed on a meeting.
That's fine.
Okay, thank you. COG, attended COG, they moved forward with a allocation of the .9 stress county sales tax, they had a pretty, what I felt was a pretty reasonable sort of merit-based application process, and we did distribute the money based entirely on how the entities and projects scored, and they did add in a project, which was the number-one scorer anyway, which was the standards of cover for the fire and EMS agencies for the county, with the caveat that fire and emergency services will be taxed, emergency medical services will be taxed to cover the increased population, so from an economic development standpoint, you wanna stay ahead of that curve. I did meet with a couple of regional representatives for Habitat for Humanity, expressed our appreciation for the projects they've done in the community, and the different kinds of projects they've done in the community, and encouraged them to engage at COG and with the planning commissions to continue to open up, be flexible with the kinds of projects that they want. I did speak at the overdose awareness day last week, that was hard to do, I remember roughly 150 to 200 overdoses that I treated specifically, and probably in the neighborhood of 3,000 in my career that I oversaw in some capacity, a lot of people don't make it. And there's a new variant of fentanyl, car fentanyl, that is coming into the community, this is coming from law enforcement, it is intentionally being introduced into drugs that wouldn't traditionally have a sedative-type effect that fentanyl and the opioids tend to have, they're putting it in cocaine and a number of other drugs to increase the addictive nature of those drugs, and my point in this is that, as a community, we need to stop burying our kids, and kind of make that commitment as a community, and that means Suboxone programs, that means the Narcan piece, it means education, it means all the things that we're doing, but, you know, this is killing more of our community than many of the other things that we pay more attention to, and I think it's important that community challenges us to stay ahead of this and do the things that have impact, to make that happen. And I'll end on a note, that the only time I've seen Hall Homes more packed was when Nirvana played Hall Homes.
Nirvana played at Hall Homes?
Yes. Regent.
Who's playing at Hall Homes?